Good evening all. This is Greg Ferris, President of Forney ISD Board of Trustees. Hereby call this Board of Trustees meeting to order at now 6:01 PM and certify our quorum is present and that this meeting has been posted in the time and manner required by law. Monthly meetings are open to the public. Although they're open to public comments and questions, the audience will be confined to the time designated for citizens to address the board. At this time, we're going to take item 16 out of order and the word will convene into closed session. It is now 6:01 PM and will convene into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551074, 551071, 551072, 551129. No voting will take place in closed session. Any action the board wishes to take as a result in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes into open session. Will now be dismissed. Good evening. If I could have your attention, please. Thank you for being here this evening. We want to welcome you to the Forney ISD Board of Trustees meeting. I am Greg Ferris and we do have a quorum present. We are going to call this meeting back to open session with item number three, introduction for the evening and our invocation led by Shawn Deeterding, Pastor of Water of Life Church. If he would please come to the podium and let's rise for the invocation this evening.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, if you kept a record of sin, who before us could stand? But with you, we know there is forgiveness. You sent your Son, Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, to pay the price for that sin. And He rose from the dead so that we may have that victory in Him always. Lord, even though we fail at times in our vocation, whether it's a part of the Board of Directors, Administrators, Teachers, Parents, and yes, Sons and Daughters, we ask, Lord, that you guard and guide and protect each of us in those vocations. May the Holy Spirit guide us and may the Holy Spirit guide this meeting tonight. May we have respect and love for each other as we do all we can for raising those who are the future of the community, of our state, of our country, of the world. And of course, it is not to us, oh Lord, not to us, but to your name be the glory because of your righteousness and because of your faithfulness to us. And in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor and Water of Life for being part of our community partners. We appreciate your time tonight. Moving on, we are, our pledges this evening, at this time we'll ask Dr. Barbie Knack, Principal of Ray Intermediate to come and she'll introduce our Student of the Month and then following that, Ms. Courtney Parker, we introduce our Elementary Student of the Month.
All right. Bring this closer. Yeah. Okay. I'm so excited to introduce to you Dylan Claire Tony. She's our Student of the Month for Ray Intermediate. Dylan is a sixth grader at Ray. Her parents are Steven and Ashley Tony and she has two older sisters, Ava and Camry, who are also Ray Eagles as well. Outside of school, Dylan enjoys playing soccer, doing arts and crafts, working out with her mom, and doing projects with her dad. She also enjoys watching college football, especially TCU. I know mom is proud of that. And admitted that she cheers for the Cowboys because her dad expects her to, but she really likes the Kansas City Chiefs. Sorry Dad. At school, Dylan's favorite classes are dance, choir, and math. After high school, she plans to become either an interior designer or a teacher. When nominated for this honor, the staff had great things to say about her. Dylan, they said, Dylan gives her all and everything that she does. She strives to do her best every day and is kind and respectful to her teachers and to other students. Her patience and compassion for others is a virtue. Dylan is a true bright light at Ray. We can't wait to see what the future holds for this Ray Eagle. Join me in celebrating such a wonderful student, Dylan Claire Tony.
Good evening School Board, Dr. Terry. The Advanced Academics and Fine Arts Academy at Blackburn is pleased to honor London Alexander as our Student of the Month. London is a fourth grader who lives with her mother, Channing Jarvis, and her siblings, Shania Jarvis, who is currently participating in our goals program, Samuel Alexander, who's at Smith Intermediate, and Noah, who is with us at Blackburn. London moved to Blackburn this school year and in the short time that she has been here, she's already known to her teachers and peers as a person that leads with integrity and honesty. London is an amazing young lady with outstanding character. London stands out to her teachers as someone who is responsible and dependable. One of her teachers states that she comes to class every day and exuberates a positive attitude that is always ready to work and try hard. London is known for pushing herself to excel in everything she tries and takes corrections with grace and poise. London's peers know her as kind and loving, a friend that is a friend to everyone. One friend stated that London is so nice and kind and hardworking and she has my back when I'm down and helps me get up when I fall. She laughs a lot because that's what we do with friends. London would like to be a nail and makeup artist when she grows up. Her granny is giving her plenty of practice applying makeup and mom and sister enjoy letting her work on their nails. London would like to attend college, enhance her skills of becoming a successful nail and makeup artist. Having such a positive, kind, and wonderful student like London has been a tremendous blessing to Blackburn. London is a wonderful young lady, a dedicated student, and an awesome role model that we're fortunate to have at the Advanced Academics and Fine Arts Academy.
Please rise for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Next we'll move on to some other recognitions and awards. I'd like to ask Mr. Nick Edwards to introduce our Forney Family Awards.
Dr. Terry, School Board, the Forney Family Award goes to people and organizations that represent the very best of our community. As a long-term partner with the district, Free Life Church has done an amazing job of connecting to students and to our staff this year. They have been a vital part of our principals and pastors partnership, which is really key to connecting our churches and our nonprofits to our schools, and they continue to serve in new ways every time they are asked. Not only have they done all this in adopting schools and being a part of those programs, but as part of our 2022 Angel Tree Program, Free Life donated over $2,000 towards gifts to students. It was just incredible. But they didn't stop there. They also provided 16 staff members with a $500 gift card for Christmas. This level of commitment, hard work, and investment is why I present to you Free Life Church for the February 2023 Forney Family Award.
Moving on with our next group to recognize, we've got student recognitions. Is Neil Weaver in the house? There he is, back there. Mr. Weaver, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. School Board, it's always a pleasure mine to be able to recognize student athletes who are not only great athletes but also scholars. We've got over 3,000 student athletes in Forney ISD these days and as they get to the top of the mountain, they're seniors, they've been a contributing member to their varsity team. They have kept a high grade point average and achieved on college readiness testing. They are heavily nominated for Texas High School Coaches Association and Texas Girls' Coaches Association Academic Allstate. It is quite a recognition. We have a senior tonight from Forney High School. First, I ask Coach Michelle Hyble, our head volleyball coach and girls athletic coordinator at Forney High School, to come up and join me. Michelle would have been nominated coaches. It's an outstanding program that she runs, perennial playoff team, and one of her great seniors, GHSCA and TGCA Academic Allstate, is Kayden Gilpatrick.
Weaver. And at this time, Ms. Glanton, if you would come forward, I think you have some recognitions.
Good evening. Can I get to drive you to the seat now?
Good evening. The FISD Fine Arts Department is proud to share the recent accomplishments of the Warren Middle School cheer team. Come on up. The squad recently competed in the NCAA competition on January 22nd, winning third place out of 11 teams in the Junior High and Middle School Large Game Day Division at NCAA High School Nationals. In addition to this honor, the squad earned an award for technical excellence. Congratulations to these students and their coaches.
Thank you all for taking time to come tonight. Next, we would like to ask Dr. Weber to come up. I think she has a recognition to do. Dr. Weber?
Mr. Ferris and School Board, this is a really, really exciting award. Forney ISD Learning Circle is really, really proud to announce that this is a first-time award for the Texas Thespians Premier Communities for Theater Education. This is the first year for this award and we are one of nine schools in the entire state to receive this out of the over 1,000 districts. And this award recognizes an honored school district that really go above and beyond with theater education. They evaluate our curriculum, scheduling, class sizes, facilities, theater safety, technical equipment, and on and on and on. And Ms. Janee Glanton filled out all the paperwork, applied for this, and we were chosen as one of the nine districts. And research shows that students involved in theater often excel in other career fields such as public speaking, communication, peer resolution. So our theater programs are very, very important to our students. So this allows us now to apply for a national award and so we're very proud. This award is very much like the fine arts one in the music education program that we've won for years now. So they changed the award and have a new one now and we are one of nine districts in the state, to be honest. I want to congratulate Janee Glanton in her work with our theater departments and her work with all of our students.
We have one more recognition we'd like to have and Dr. Terry is, Neil Weaver, come back up. He has a presentation to make.
Thank you once again. There are about 36,000 coaches in public schools across the state of Texas and a few years ago, just two, a little over two years ago, the Texas High School Coaches Association began an initiative in partnership with the Thornton McFerrin Coaching Academy at Texas A&amp;M University to take some of the best young coaches in our state and put them through a mentorship program. Allow them to network with great people all over the state, to attend state-level events, to get opportunities to work at those events, to attend leadership training and do some things at a very elite level. About 65 coaches out of those 36,000 are selected as rock mentees and these mentees are paired with a mentor. They're able to represent their campuses, their school districts, and of course, the coaching profession in a lot of activities across the state of Texas. It's a two-year program that they go through and there's a lot that is expected of them, but of course, we are able to expect a lot of them on the back end. Only the best young coaches are selected for this and we're very pleased to have a young coach at Warren Middle School who is one of the 65 rock mentees for the state
This time, I'd like to ask Mr.
of Texas and the Texas High School Coaches Association this year, Coach Lindley Case.
John Chase to come forward and monthly financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Tonight, we're here to discuss the operating results through December 2022. As to start off with in the general fund, our revenues collected to date is 82.9 million and that's 54% of the amount that we have estimated. And for prior year's comparison, we were at 52%. So pretty well on track on our revenues in our general fund. Moving on to expenditures, the year-to-date expenses was 83.4 million and that's 50% of our appropriation. And you would have kind of expected to be somewhere in that neighborhood after six months of the years that's passed. So we're in pretty good shape there for prior year comparison. We're slightly behind that, 47%. Again, there's a little bit of variances there. This year, we had some capital allocation things that we rolled over from the prior year to the current year and had some expenditures early on in the year that drove that up a little bit, but we're still in pretty good shape halfway through the year in the general fund. Moving on to food service, revenue year-to-date, it was 3.1 million and this is further broken down. We had 1.4 million was collected from students either through the plate lunches or à la carte sales. The remaining 1.7 million was federal reimbursements for our free and reduced lunch program. That represents 49% of the amount that we have estimated for the year. We did have 66,000 reimbursable meals that we sold during the month and that's about half of what we normally do, but again, December only has, we only served for two weeks during that month, so there's no surprises there. Prior year, at this same point in time, we were at 53% collected. Moving on, food service expenditures, year-to-date, we're at 2.8 million and that's 43% of the amount appropriated and last year, we were at 40%. Again, we had the same thing last month, the coronavirus pandemic last year, trying to make the comparisons early on in the year. We didn't have as many kids here because some of them opted to stay home for a bit, but when you go back to look at non-pandemic years, this is pretty well where we were at in this, through December for the current year. As far as debt service revenues, year-to-date, we're at 25.1 million and that's 60% of the amount estimated in prior year. We were at 52%. There's a little bit of variance here, mainly has to do with the timing when people make their property tax payments, usually around sometime mid-February. These percentages kind of work themselves out because at that time, the property taxes are delinquent and so most people have paid them by that point, so we'll usually be pretty well right on track and I expect that to be the same for this year. Expenditures, year-to-date, in our debt service fund, it's 20.6 million and that's 60% of the amount appropriated. February 15th, we'll have our big payment for interest for our bonds that are outstanding and that'll pretty much expend our appropriation, our debt service fund for the year. Won't have very much activity in there from this point on. So prior year, for comparative purposes, we were 67% expended and we've talked about the differences there. We had actually paid off fewer bonds earlier this year than we did in the prior year and that difference is about 7%, but again, we're right on track with our budget. And then finally, on our cash investments on hand at the end of December, and our general fund, food service, debt service, and capital project fund was 475 million and the majority of, or bulk of which is in our capital project funds to fund the construction projects that we have going right now. That's the financial report for the month. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Any questions from the board? I hear none. We'll move on to quarterly investment report.
Again, the cash investments on hand through, at the end of December, was 476 million, almost 477 million. And this was on deposit at our local depository or one of three investment pools, as you see over on the left-hand side. The interest rates for the quarter, quite a bit better than they have been in the recent past. It wasn't too long ago, we were at 0.2%. So you know, we're ranging anywhere from 2.9 to 3.8 now. So you know, that's quite a bit better than it has been. I mean, it's great when you're saving money, but not so great when you're borrowing money. So it's kind of a catch-22 there, but total interest collected for the quarter is almost $4 million, so quite a bit. Most of that was reported as interest in our capital project funds. Now, I would point out, in our capital project fund, the IRS will only allow you to keep as much revenue that you collect in interest as, no more than what you actually, your bond's stated interest rates are. So they refer to that as arbitrage when we do the calculations on an annual basis. It's possible that we might have to rebate some of that interest back at the end of the year. There's benchmarks that you have to hit as long as you've expended certain amounts of dollars within a certain timeframe. You won't have to do the rebates, but you can at least keep up to whatever the stated interest rate is on the bonds or actually the true interest cost of the bond. So right now, I think that's probably fairly close to what some of those bonds are, you know, the true interest costs on some of those bonds that we sold are. So anything that we go above this, we'll probably have some arbitrage, but we may or may not have to kick it back on rebate payments. That's the quarterly investment report and be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
I hear no questions. Moving on to second quarter tax collection report.
As stated in the prior quarter, our total property tax values for the year was right at eight, almost $8.4 billion and that translated into a levy of 113 million and change. For the, to date, on our current taxes, we've collected 63.2 million and that's 50, almost 56% of the levy. For prior year comparative purposes, you know, we'd collect about 40% of the levy on a five-year average and there's kind of a couple of years, mainly in those pandemic years, that's kind of skewing the averages a little bit. If you strip those out, it's in the low 50s or so. So we're pretty well right on track on our tax collections, our current tax collections. As far as taxes from the prior years, we collected almost $700,000 for taxes in that category and that, you know, as a percentage of our current levy, that's about 0.6%. And then if you look at the five-year average, we also collected almost $700,000 and that was about 0.9% of the levies in those years. And so pretty well on track in our tax collections and we're happy to answer any questions if you have them.
I hear none. Thank you, Mr. Chase. Next moving on to item D, our future-ready update, Ms. Robin Pierce.
Good evening, Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry, and the board. I had the honor tonight of presenting to you some of the great accomplishments that we have done in our future-ready department here this past semester and kind of what's coming forward for us. So where are we now? This is just a quick recap of some of the things that we have done this school year. We've had a virtual and a face-to-face college fair for our students, multiple esports events. We've had five CTE program tours for surrounding districts that we're really proud of, of showcasing our programs and working with them for them to develop these programs in their own districts. We've had TSI testing days in the school day, as well as we implemented Saturday testing this year. We've had SAT boot camps, FAFSA nights, dual credit nights. We've had three discovery days at our middle schools and then we just wrapped up three focus nights, one at North, one at Forney, and a virtual option for our parents and had the largest turnout we've had in a few years. So super excited due to the fact of all the new programs that you guys are letting us bring to the district, so thank you for that. Higher ed partnerships, just nothing, I mean, this is amazing. So we offer 73 courses to our students and our community currently in Forney ISD. That's over 219 college credit hours that we offer to our students and community. We offer 16 industry certifications for our students and we have eight dual-credit CTE workforce programs where they're getting their CTE workforce certification and those college credit hours that we currently offer our students. These are our kind of numbers you can see in the chart of our dual-credit participation. Over the last five years, we've gained over 700 students to dual-credit. That's mostly in part for our extended partnership with offering free of charge dual-credit for our students. This year, we just opened registration about two weeks ago and we are already over 1,000 students that have applied to be in dual-credit and we still have two more weeks for our students to still enroll. So that number, we foresee going up even further. So super excited about those offerings for our students. We currently have 500 students by the end of the school year that will complete between nine and 15 credit hours, 150 students that will complete between 15 and 30 credit hours. We have 55 students that will have completed 30 or more college credit hours and 57 that will either leave with core complete or an associate's degree. So that's our current seniors. These numbers don't include our freshmen that are in our Collegiate Academy, which we have about 98 currently in our Collegiate Academy as freshmen, but by the time they finish, they will only have six hours. So that's not including those numbers, but they're on the track to gain their associates or core complete before leaving high school. I'm Mr. Robin Pierce.
Good evening, Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry, and the board. I had the honor tonight of presenting to you some of the great accomplishments that we have done in our future-ready department here this past semester, and kind of what's coming forward for us. So where are we now? This is just a quick recap of some of the things that we have done this school year. We've had a virtual and a face-to-face college fair for our students, multiple e-sports events. We've had five CTE program tours from surrounding districts that we're really proud of, of showcasing our programs and working with them for them to develop these programs in their own districts. We've had TSI testing days in the school day, as well as we implemented Saturday testing this year. We've had SAT boot camps, FAFSA nights, dual-credit nights. We've had three discovery days at our middle schools, and then we just wrapped up three focus nights, one at North, one at Forney, and a virtual option for our parents, and had the largest turnout we've had in a few years. So super excited, due to the fact of all the new programs that you guys are letting us bring to the district. So thank you for that. Higher ed partnerships, just nothing, I mean, this is amazing. So we offer seventy-three courses to our students and our community currently in Forney ISD. That's over two hundred, or two hundred and nineteen college credit hours that we offer to our students and community. We offer sixteen industry certifications for our students. And we have eight dual-credit CTE workforce programs, where they're getting their CTE workforce certification and those college credit hours that we currently offer our students. These are our kind of numbers you can see in the chart of our dual-credit participation. Over the last five years, we've gained over seven hundred students to dual-credit. That's mostly in part for our extended partnership with offering free-of-charge dual-credit for our students. This year, we just opened registration about two weeks ago, and we are already over a thousand students that have applied to be in dual-credit. And we still have two more weeks for our students to still enroll. So that number, we foresee going up even further. So super excited about those offerings for our students. We currently have five hundred students by the end of the school year that will complete between nine and fifteen credit hours. A hundred and fifty students that will complete between fifteen and thirty credit hours. We have fifty-five students that will have completed thirty or more college credit hours. And fifty-seven that will either leave with core complete or an associate's degree. So that's our current seniors. This, these numbers don't include our freshmen that are in our Collegiate Academy, which we have about ninety-eight currently in our Collegiate Academy as freshmen. But by the time they finish, they will only have six hours. So that's not including those numbers. But they're on the track to gain their associates or core complete before leaving high school. That comes out to this year, we have saved our families, five hundred and seventy-four, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that we have saved our families here in Forney, which is amazing. So super excited about that and what we can offer to our families. Our Forney family partnership, we have grown, we have a hundred and three current Forney families. So Forney parents, siblings, anyone who lives in Forney with that getting in-district tuition. We have a hundred and three currently participating and taking advantage of that in our district. We are offering eighteen college certification courses to our community currently at night, with welding, HVAC, and patient care tech. We have four certifications, level-one and two certifications, that we offer through Dallas College for our community at night as well, which are the two in welding, an HVAC, and a patient care tech certification course for our community. Future-ready skills, that's been a big push, right? So these are just some of the things that we've intentionally placed at our campuses to help with college and career readiness. K-8, we have implemented, all of our seventh and eighth graders take career assessments in eighth grade through IRL or their CTE principals class. Our intermediate takes interest inventories and then explores those and does some career exploration at the intermediate levels. Kind of a passion project every year on their interest, on what career path they may see them going into. We will be having elementary career days coming up this spring at all of our elementary campuses. We are still doing the IRL course, of course, for all of our fifth through seventh graders. And elementary morning meetings was put into place this school year, where we teach future-ready skills every morning to every K through four student through morning meetings, led by either counselors. Some principals lead those through morning announcements and do that with the whole campus. And, but that's going really well, and we see great results from that. And then, of course, we offer the CTE principal courses this year, which gains our students not only a CTE course, but they also get high school credit for that, an additional high school credit after IRL, sorry, I forgot to say that. And then prepares them so that we can have them in a level-two or more CTE class by their sophomore year, gaining those additional credit vocational hours. In high school, industry certification days is new for us. We have designated district days where our students are going to be taking their industry certifications. And then we will have signing days after that for all of our students that passed, kind of like athletic signing, we want to do a CTE signing day for those students, because it's a great accomplishment, and they've accomplished a lot through that. SAT, we have been ACT, but this year, we're in SAT school day. For all of our juniors, we'll take SAT this spring. We've implemented, like I said earlier, we have been doing TSI A2 during the school day the past two years. But now that we are a testing district, we offer Saturday testing for our students to come up, ninth through eleventh graders. And then we have ASVAB, which we have always had, but we opened that up to juniors this year for the ASVAB assessment during the school day. Junior and senior seminar, we did senior seminars last year, but we added juniors. And we're going to add this year to our senior seminars, which is like a, kind of a conference setting for our seniors. Where we bring in a panel of former students that are off at college, a panel for our students to sit through and ask questions about college. We have a financial breakout session. We have different entrepreneurs come in and talk. We have businesses come in and talk. And this year, we're adding in job interview skills. Last year was our first annual career fair for our high school students. So a job fair where we bring outside businesses into the school during the school day, and our students got to go and interview. But a lot of our students were lacking in interview skills. We learned very quickly last year. So this year, we're going to intentionally do interview skills, and we're bringing in some businesses to help us with that on our senior and junior seminar days, so that we can kind of get those interview skills and work on resume building, so that they're ready for the career fair and are more successful in that. Our student enterprises, as you know, you see it everywhere. So the local has served over two hundred and fifty meals this school year and has hosted ten catering events. Our Off the Leash has served over one hundred and fifteen dogs, and we have seventy animals in our animal science center, which is one of the largest really in this region. With that new animal science center, we've really opened opportunities for students. So it's really great that we can provide that service. And Blooms, of course, has served, has made six hundred floral arrangements and has done twenty actual events, from weddings to quinceañeras to business parties. I mean, they are just rocking. So this is just a great data for us, because as we move forward, all of the businesses that we bring to the OC and the student enterprises that are bringing, we're super excited at the success of these and just ready to add some more over the next few years. So where are we going? You know, we are bringing new programs. And with each of these programs that we are bringing to Forney for our students and community, automotive technology, of course, we will have dual-credit. They will gain eighteen dual-credit hours plus a level-one certification in service technician, cosmetology, dual-credit. And they will earn their level-one manicurist and their level-one cosmetology operator license before they graduate. Emergency services, they will gain dual-credit and their EMT basics certification. Construction management, they will leave with their OSHA certification, but we are working to add dual-credit to that in the following years. Exercise science and wellness will gain dual-credit as well as industry certifications. And then fashion design will leave with industry certifications in our new programs. What's coming up this spring for our department? We'll have our SAT school day, our junior, senior seminars, TSI school day testing for middle school and high school coming up this spring, as well as Saturday testing days, our elementary career fairs, high school job fair. We'll start having new program nights for all our new programs. We did that at focus night, but we want to have more extensive nights to help parents with applications and answer more questions, because we did have such a large turnout. We just want to provide some more opportunity for parents to come and gain that information and apply. And then we will have a Texas Tech-Dallas College, and a couple of those coming up this spring as well. That's a lot of information, so do you have any questions for me?
I agree. Ms. Pierce, so I know you showed a really nice slide about the college partnership enrollment. Did a nice little split for us, for the university versus the students. For the slide where you had the data around seventy-three courses that we're offering to our students and community, do we have the data that shows that community versus student mix to categorize, you know, how it maybe impacts that community?
Out of this, I just have the hundred and three that are involved. I don't know what classes they're actually taking, but I can definitely get that for you on what they are taking. Yes. Great question.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Ms. Pierce.
Thank you.
Next item E is our master planning update. Ms. Kim Morsec.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. As always, Jeff Fisher from Gallagher Construction is going to kind of go through our current plans. I do want to tell you, we've had a little bit of weather between the freeze and the rain, a little bit of delay, but they've been really pushing hard. They have guys there in tsunamis if they can, so still doing a good job. I'm not going to steal his thunder, I'm going to let him give you the good news about a project. So, all right, Jeff, it's all yours, man.
Thank you, Ms. Morsec. President Ferris, Dr. Terry, members of the board, good to be with you again, as always. I'll just go through the updates on the project. As Ms. Morsec mentioned, the last two weeks have been a little rough, between the ice storm last week and the rain this week. But we're trudging through literally and making progress, so that's good. First is the Keith Bell Opportunity Central. That project's coming along very well. We've actually started the roofing now on the arena and got the roofing done on most of the exterior outside pieces of that. Once the roofing gets on and we get the windows put in, which are getting started, we're going to be able to get that building dried in and get started more fervently on the finishes, which you can see in that top picture, we've already started on some of the tile and things like that. More of the soft finishes, we'll be able to get started on once we get the building actually dried in. Just some more of the different stages of the project. You can see in the top, we're doing some finishes, and the middle, still finishing out the steel erection on the back part there, where we had to back out of the arena, and then the drywall firdowns and things on the inside. So obviously, with every project, it's in different stages in different areas, but coming along very well. Mary Lou Duberry Elementary School also is coming along well. It's, you know, you can see the ICF up in the top there. The exterior masonry is starting to go on. Roofing is in progress. And, you know, again, that project's moving along. Don't think we'll have any problems with it, as long as we can keep some more of the spring weather away from us. But we're getting close to being where the weather won't affect us as much on that one as well. Some more pictures of Duberry. You can see the ICF walls framed up there on the bottom and the stairs in on the top. North Forney Freshman Center, this is the one that Ms. Morsec said she wouldn't steal my thunder. We did get some very good news today, that we did get the first load of structural steel show up. So we're able to now start moving on that project a little bit better. Really, it'll start moving fast now that we can get the floor steel in and start getting it erected. I believe the storm shelter panels start showing up early next month. So you'll start to see some above-ground progress on that project, as well as Forney High School, as we move forward. The slab, and actually, this picture's a little bit outdated. Actually, the slab in the concrete masonry block walls at the Fine Arts Edition are complete. And so that part of the project's moving along very quickly. We didn't have to wait on steel on that part. Forney High School expansion, very similar. We did not get a load of steel on that one, but that's supposed to show up here within the next couple of weeks, and we can get started on filling in that bottom picture where all that floor steel goes. So that one will be moving along as well. Transportation Center, you can see in the top picture there, the interior is pretty much complete. The punch list was walked, I believe, last week, maybe the week before. So we're working on punching that out, getting it finished. And then on the exterior, I believe that they've got that slab pour scheduled. They had it scheduled, and then the rain held them up. So they should be getting that poured here within, probably early next week, once they get it dried out. Very early, Teemer Middle School, pretty much, you know, stripping and getting the crawl space excavation done. We have been waiting on permits from the city on that. We do have a foundation permit now, and I believe they told us Wednesday that they're getting ready to release the rest of the permits on that one. So that'll be good for us to get moving. Then I think there, again, as soon as we get some dry soil out there, they'll be out there doing the test piles for the auger cast piles and get those going. We do have, like I said, the foundation permit, so we can get moving on the piers on that one. And then Warren, similarly, we've demoed the parking lot, North parking lot, and working on dirt work. And we are still waiting on, all we have on that one is a grading permit. So we're still waiting on the foundation permit and the building permits on that one. And I believe that's the last of them. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Hi, David.
Okay.
First of all, congratulations on the structural steel.
Oh, thank you. That was a big milestone for us, for sure, yeah.
Yeah, I know that there's a lot of new construction underway, several projects situated within a very close proximity of each other, actually, especially over on the north side, Mary Lou Duberry, North Forney, the freshman center, and even the substation, and then Wyomar's has kind of their own construction.
Right.
They're building out one of the largest communities that we have around Forney. So I live, you know, I live close to that area, and so I noticed that there's a lot of heavy traffic between Falcon Way and Iron Gate. And, you know, and it's all throughout the day. And so, because there's so much construction going on in the area. So with that, we've also got these different schools that are in the area with various age ranges of students that are walking actually on those major highways. So just considering all that's going on with the construction that's in the area, the heavy traffic, the recent incidents, you know, I just really wanted to know a little bit more about the safeguards that we have in place, so that for walkers that are walking home, you know, hopefully, they don't wander into one of these construction sites. But what if they do? What's the protocol, you know, that we follow? If one of our kids walks into one of those dangerous construction sites?
Sure. So, yeah, and everyone that works on the site knows this, and we covered in our safety meetings and our contractor meetings and things like that, that if any member of the public works on, walks on the site, whether it be a kid or an adult, somebody immediately addresses it. And if it's, whether it's the plumber, or whether it's the drywall contractor, whoever, you know, whoever sees that, we'll go to them and check with them and see what they, why they're there. And then they're also told to notify the Gallagher representative, so that we can go over there and make sure that they address whatever, you know, if it's an adult, obviously, there could be a reason why they're there. If it's a child, then immediately get them off the site and figure out where they need to be and make sure that they're, you know, safe, for sure, so.
Is there a communication or intersection between the construction team and the district in that sort of scenario?
So I'm going to just add a little bit to Jeff's as well. They have everything fenced off. So we have a secure fence perimeter for all of our jobs that's locked at night, unless one of their guys are there. And then they have added security that drives around and checks those in the evening as well. The campus, before we put the fence up, we talk to the campus, the campus knows. And we work with the administration to make sure their kids are not walking through that site. Their, Gallagher is awesome. I'm the liaison between them and the campus. But we also know kids are sometimes going to have to go through a site to get to another place. So we put, we call them, we put fence rows basically up with temporary sidewalk to safely get them from one place to another. So we're very conscientious of that and work very closely with them on all of our sites.
And is there very contact, there's communication back when there are situations where we've got to kind of work with a child that needs to be moved away from?
We haven't really had much of that. We had a little bit at one campus, and so we had to go meet with athletic directors and that type of thing to talk about protocol, where kids can be, where they can't be. But very few incidents since we've been working on it.
And so the fencing, one more thing, the fencing, I know you talked about that. Are the access points managed to where they're not randomly left open throughout the day or closed?
Yes, I mean, the, you know, obviously, the main, there's really only one access point to each site, and that's through the construction entrance, right? Now, that's left open during the day, because we've got people coming back and forth all the time. But, but again, you know, we have protocols in place to address any issues like that. And really, we try to strategically place our construction entrances where they're not easily accessible. Sometimes that gets a little tough, because like the Forney High School freshman center, obviously, it's right in, you know, in the middle of a campus. So, you know, we still try to, you know, we've got that placed on the far east side, so it's away from where any of the kids would be. And, but we do have those protocols set in place, where if we do have an incident, then the Gallagher personnel are there, and then they get in contact with Kim and make sure that, like Kim said, I don't know that we've had any incidents, other than the one, I think that was at North. And that got addressed real quickly. And, but we do have, I mean, we've been working around schools for about forty years now, so we're pretty used to that, yeah.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem.
Hey, Jeff, with the challenges that I guess we've, we've kind of all encountered to some degree coast-to-coast worldwide, are you guys still seeing a staffing, a skilled labor shortage at all? Or what's the outlook for supplies and equipment moving forward? Have they stabilized, do you think, at this point?
Some, well, I'll address your first question first. As far as the skilled labor goes, the days of having skilled craftsmen is almost over. I mean, we're, you're kind of lucky to get what you get. Now, that makes our job a little more difficult, because we have to monitor them more and make sure that we're getting the quality that, you know, the school district expects, which we do that. But yes, there's still a shortage of skilled labor, no doubt. As far as materials go, some of it stabilized, some of it has actually gotten a little bit worse. We bid a project down by San Angelo, I guess about a month ago, and the lead times that we got on the electrical switchgear on it were eighty weeks. So that makes it tough to get a job. And that's, that particular project is fairly small. It would probably normally be a ten-to-twelve-month project, and now it's a sixteen-month project, because, and actually, we were able to move that switchgear back from an April delivery to an October delivery. But still, that makes it tough to, you know, if you don't have an electrical switchgear, you don't have power. So it makes it tough to get stuff done. There's still challenges out there, for sure.
Anybody else? Well, thank you both. Appreciate your leadership, Kim, and thank you, Mr. Fisher and your company, for all your time and efforts you put into us. And it is that forty years' experience that make all our projects term in. make all our projects term in, on schedule and usually under budget. So we appreciate y'all being diligent about that. Thank you very much. Ms. Morzak, anything else? And moving on, item seven, we have no one signed up. We'll move on to consent. Then number eight, consent agendas, approve the minutes from January ninth board meeting, approve minutes from January ninth workshop, approve the budget amendment, D, approve the auditor's contract, E, approve the resolution to joint Texas 20 purchasing cooperative, nine F, approve the foreign exchange student waiver, nine G, approve easement, nine H, approve the TIPS proposal, I, approve the statement of impact from charter schools could have an impact on Fornie ISD, and that is Harmony Public Schools, Central Texas. The board may take action on each of these separately or collectively. Do I have a motion from the board?
President Ferris, I'd like to pull items A, C, and E. A, C, and E for clarifications and for those to be considered separately.
Would you repeat that again? Which ones?
A, C.
A, C?
No, A, C. Sorry, just the number eight.
C.
Sorry, C, and E.
Okay. So then is there a motion to approve B, D, F, G, H, and I collectively? And A?
No, I was saying eight.
Yeah, but the others will do collectively, is what I'm saying. Okay? All the others except C and E collectively. Ms. Burkhalter, do I have a second?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Green. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Eight C, approve a budget amendment. I guess, Mr. Chase, would you please address that?
Just a quick question for you. In the appropriations for instruction and curriculum staff development category, the proposal requests a collective total of 17,000, approximately 17,000 to be transferred from those buckets. What is the tactical level impact to our educators assuming their options from the transfer in those areas?
Just give me one second, I'll pull it up.
Sure.
So I make sure I understand what your question is. The majority of the one, in the instructional category, we're pulling that out of, and it's kind of a judgment call, I guess. In our guidance and counseling center in, at Fornie High School, they're wanting to purchase almost $10,000 worth of Chromebooks and have them on, on hand. So when they test the kids, the ones that forget their Chromebooks, that they have some Chromebooks to loan them in order to do the testing. And so, you know, it was originally at the campus level, they budgeted in function 11, and we, if they were going to keep them and catalog them and store them in the, in the counseling office or have them in the counseling office, we just felt like maybe it was better to show it in the guidance and counseling category. So 10,000 of that, of that amount was transferred. That's what the requested amount is for that. Transfers, as far as the other 5,000 of that, let's see. Some, some of that had to do with transferring funds from the band program, from instructional category to extracurricular, to pay travel expenses for the, for the, for the band program, basically, is what that boiled down to. They had some, some expenses for, for that, that program that they needed. That was more of extracurricular in nature as opposed to instruction. And as far as the, the guidance and counseling part of that. I'm, excuse me, curriculum staff development, I'm sorry. I misspoke on that. The majority of that was, was, in, in our learner services budget, they, they had some money that was originally budgeted for, for curriculum staff development that, that needed to be transferred over to the instructional leadership category. That was, that was to pay some travel expenses for their program as well.
Will the educators see a tactical level impact for money being allocated? Or is this really just?
Most of it has to do with.
What you mean by tactical level impact?
Is there a daily impact there's, their curriculum and staff development activities?
Yeah, it would actually probably enhance and enrich, but we'll, we'll let Dr. Weber answer that if it's okay.
No, in fact, what has happened, we didn't put as much money in travel after coming out of COVID, because most of the conferences, really high-level impactful conferences, were diminished and/or canceled during COVID. So then, when these conferences all came back, we realized we actually impact instruction at a much greater level by providing some district, along with campus-level leadership, attending some of these conferences, leadership things. Title II can be used for campus leadership, but different budgets in my world have to fund, say we send a central office person along with a campus team to attend a conference. So it was kind of a lower amount of funds put in travel. Now the conferences have come back. So the impact on learning is actually going to be greatly improved because we are now sending many more of our campus leaders to training, but pairing that with different department leaders who work with them so that both sides of the house, the campus and central office, have the same learning to work together.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you both very much. Appreciate that. Do I have a motion for eight C and E?
I had a question about being as well.
Oh, I thought you were finished. I'm sorry.
That's okay, sorry. So, he, reviewing the summary of why we should join the Texas 20 Purchasing Cooperative, it seems we're going to have more options to purchase goods and services competitively. Can you provide a little detail around what types of goods and services and how does that compare to our current state situation?
So specifically, I, I know on this, in this particular vendor, I think next year, whenever we open the Occupy, Opportunity Central, there's some catering vendors that, they wanted to have access to out there that, that this has already been competitively procured in this purchasing cooperative. And so in order to take advantage of those contracts that have already been negotiated, we, we need to join the cooperative in order to have access to that, or else we'd have to do it, you know, have a, have a procurement process on our own. So that was specifically what that one was all about.
Okay, thank you.
I hear none. Then I'll call for a motion on item eight C and E. Have a motion for Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burkhalter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Thank you very much. Moving on to number nine, consideration possible approval of the 22, 23 full-time equivalent positions additions. Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. As the board is aware, this is normally the time of the year, really starting in January and moving through February now, that we start really planning for our, our next budget cycle. And of course, one of the biggest pieces of the puzzle in that budget cycle is, is trying to figure out the amount of staff that we're going to have to have for the upcoming school year. And based on our demographic estimate that we got from our demographer recently, we looked to add about 1,520 or it may be slightly above that. I think he made a slight modification to it yesterday, but it's not going to, I mean, it may be 10, 10 kids different, give or take. But, but in, in any event, the estimate that we had in order to serve those 1,500-plus kids would necessitate us adding 228 staff members. And a large part of that, you know, with opening a new elementary school and opening up this, the OC, a lot of the staff that's going to be take to support something like that is, is, is quite, you know, extensive and as you might imagine. So based on the math on that, we normally, a pretty good rule of thumb, when you consider admin staff all the way down to the frontline custodial grounds, a good, a good average is about, you know, 58,000 dollars, you know, plus benefits is somewhere in the 63,000 dollar range for the, for each position. And so when you multiply that out, that's going to be about 14 and a half million dollars. When we look at making our revenue projections for next year, it's kind of difficult in the biennium, whenever the legislature's meeting right now to determine what our revenues are going to be for next year. We, we use what our current year, and what we know in the current year, that it shouldn't be any worse than, than what our current year formulas are. And based on that, and assuming that we move from, from a tier two fast growth to a tier one fast growth, because we were right on the bubble last, this, this year, I think we were two districts shy of actually getting into that, in that first tier of fast growth allotment, which basically means, you know, you have access to a few more million dollars when that happens. Assuming that 1,800 kid increase this year, which is what we had, will move us into that tier one, we feel like, you know, we'll at least have another 15.5 million dollars in additional revenues. Now, you know, we're hearing a lot from the state that there's, there's a lot of extra revenue, and there's, there's going to be competing forces about who gets that revenue, whether it's, you know, given to, to taxpayers in the form of tax relief, or if it's to increase the, the funding formula so we can give teachers a pretty good pay increase. We'll see how all that shakes out. But, but, but right now, we feel like we need these 228 positions. Again, a sizable amount of those, about 60 or so, are going to be food service, maintenance, custodial grounds, and things of that nature. So our, our recommendation is, is that you give us the authority to, to add those to our budget for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Dr. Terry, do you have anything to add?
No, it's pretty, pretty standard for this time of year. We did receive our fourth-quarter estimates, and that 15, 20 is actually, as John said, affirmed with a handful of students more than that by the demographer. And we do feel, we're, we're hearing some pretty good things from, from down south and Austin, and think that, you know, hopefully that revenue estimate, as, as I've stated before, it's a question mark right now. You never know when they get together what's going to happen when the sausage is made. But we are hoping to be able to increase that revenue estimate substantially in the future based on what the legislators do. So we would like to get ahead of some of these hiring, and so we would recommend approving the staffing allocation as presented.
Thank you. Boards, you've heard from administration. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the 20, 23, 24 full-time equivalent positions as presented and recommended by the administration.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Moving on to item 10. Item 10 is considering possible approval of a resolution authorizing superintendent to approve and execute certain construction-related easements.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. As you know, we're still building a lot. And every time we either build a building or do any work on a building, we're having to come to the board to get permission to, to grant easements to our major companies. So that's sewer, gas, water, electrical, those type of things. And that's slowing down our process a little bit. We would like you to grant the authority to Dr. Terry to approve those easements only as related to construction. So I'll just give you a couple of examples. Just at Warren, we've had to reroute power around Warren to build Clay Jones, plus we have to get sewer, power, water to Clay Jones. And so each one of those would be a separate board action at different times. And if I can get that easement the day after a board meeting, we're waiting a full month before we can execute that. So these would only be related to construction projects. And it just would allow us to, to grant the authority to do that in a more timely manner and keep the projects kind of going.
Thank you, Ms. Morzak. Dr. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. We concur with Ms. Morzak and recommend approving the resolution as presented.
May I have a motion from the board?
President Ferris, I move that the board approve the following resolution authorizing superintendent to approve and execute certain construction-related easements.
Boards, you've heard the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 11, consideration possible approval of resolution approving interlocal agreement between the Fornie ISD and the City of Fornie for the widening of Ranch Road from 740 to just north of Innovation Boulevard. Ms. Morzak?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. This is a pretty exciting opportunity, I think. The city is wanting to widen Ranch to help that Pinson intersection right there as you go towards Jackson Roads. And we have an opportunity to engage with Gallagher, to work in partnership with the city to really do two things. This is the city portion of the project that would, we would work on. And that's widening that in both directions to really help at that intersection. And then in conjunction with that, the district has two parts of Innovation Boulevard that we need to expand. So one is to complete the second half of Innovation out to Ranch Road, and the second one is, I guess we'll call that northwest of the roundabout to get out to Ed Wilson Elementary School. So we would do all these, bid all these projects together for economy of scale and to expedite that Ranch Road project, help the city get that built a little bit faster. They would then reimburse us for any costs for the Ranch Road portion. So we're, we're asking the board to approve that resolution so that we can engage with the city and, and get this built quickly for our patrons and really to help with traffic up in that area.
Thank you, Ms. Morzak. Dr. Terry?
Thank you, Ms. Ferris. Yeah, this just, it made a lot of sense. We presented this opportunity to the city just really for, from an economy of scale perspective. I think building these all in conjunction is, is really a benefit for all of us. And especially if we can save a few dollars for our taxpayers in the process. So appreciative of the city for, for partnering with us on this project. We think this is a good move and would recommend the resolution. This would be no cost to the school district for the Ranch Road side of things. As Ms. Morzak said, the city, this was a project they had slated already and already had their design in place as well. So good, good opportunity to partner with City Fornie and recommend the resolution as presented.
Boards, you've heard the recommendations. Do I have a motion?
President Ferris, I move that the board approve the following resolution authorizing an interlocal agreement with the City of Fornie for the widening of Ranch Road from 10740 to just north of Innovation Boulevard.
Fair to motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Thank you, Ms. Morzak. Moving on to item 12, consideration possible approval of resolution for emergency closure waiver. Rick Gere?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. School board members, well, we had a little bit of disruption of school operations last week, and so the recent inclement weather resulted in the closure of these schools for January 31st through the February 3rd for the safety of our students, our staff, and community as a whole. In order for our staff to receive pay for these days not worked, the board must establish a purpose for these payments. In the case of the school closures, paying employees for hours not worked will increase morale and will likely reduce employee turnover. The board has very graciously taken this action, probably actually last year in February at this time, and I believe a couple of years prior to that as well. And so we do appreciate that. Board policy DEA local requires the board to adopt a resolution establishing the purpose and the parameters for paying employees during the school closure. Our resolution meets the requirement of our policy.
Thank you, Mr. Gere. Dr. Terry, do you have any further comments?
No, this is just a great thing to do for our staff and appreciate the, the history of the board approval on this and recommend approval of the resolution. Make sure these guys, you know, aren't missing paychecks as they move forward, especially with some of our, our wage workers, for sure.
Do I have a motion from the board?
I move that the board approve the resolution for emergency closure waiver.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Burkhalter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Moving on to item 13, consideration possible approval of an order calling for school board election for positions one and two for May 6. Dr. Terry, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. There are three additional action items that we have to take annually when election season does come along. This year, we do have positions one and two open. And so I would propose this evening, the first item being to call for the election itself, to partner with Kaufman County will be the second item, and the continued use of electronic voting systems. So the item 13, we would recommend calling the, the election for May 6, 2023 for positions one and two.
Do I have a motion for item 13?
Mr. Ferris, I move that we approve the call for school board election for positions one and two for May 6, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Green. All in favor? Thank you, Ms. Green. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. And item 14, Dr. Terry?
Yes, sir. In this item, we'd recommend continue our partnership with the Coffin County for their election services. They've done a great job for us in the past and would recommend that continued partnership.
Do I have a motion from the board?
I move that the board approve the use of an electronic voting system only for both early voting and election day voting.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have a second?
Uh, Ms. Ferris, Ms. Green, I think that might have been item number 15.
Sorry, read the wrong one.
Restate that?
I move the board approve the contract with Coffin County for election services for May 6, 2023 places one and two school board election.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Now, item 15.
Yes, sir. Again, we will continue to use, recommend continuing to use electronic voting systems. That is the means in which Coffin County provides their services. So would recommend approval for the May 6 election.
May I have a motion from the board for item 15?
I'll try it again. I move the board approve the use of an electronic voting system only for both early voting and election day voting.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burkhalter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Moving. Moving on to item 16, closed session. Does your board have a request to discuss any further? We covered everything earlier. Okay, we'll move on then to item 17, consideration approval for employment of professional contract personnel. Do I have a motion?
President Ferris, I move that we approve the employment of professional contract personnel as discussed in closed session.
Have a motion from Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. And item 18, consideration possible approval of a contract renewal of administrators and other professional contract personnel. May I have a motion?
President Ferris, I make a motion that the board approve the contract renewal of administrators and other professional contract personnel as discussed in closed session.
Thank you, Ms. Burkhalter. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. 19, consideration action to terminate probationary contract of school nurse at the end of the school year pursuant to Texas government code 551071 as discussed in closed session. Do I have a motion?
President Ferris, I move to terminate the probationary contract of Tracy Clay effective at the end of the 2022, 2023 school year. Finding such action to be in the best interest of the district and direct the superintendent to provide misclivity notice of this action.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Johnson, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Number 20, consideration possible action regarding pursuit of sanctions of educator banned contract. I think no action.
No action.
On that one. Dr. Terry, I'll turn it over to you for number 21 announcements.
Thank you, sir. Just a reminder, we do have a March board meeting that is actually in February. So that'll be Monday, February the 27th. We do still have, although we had a few ICE days in a row last week, we actually have those minutes through a waiver, a, a staff development waiver, as well as, it sounds like the commissioner of education is going to go ahead and waive those days for the state of Texas. Therefore, we still have student and staff holidays on February the 17th and 20th unless we have ICE between now and then. And then we also have a spring break. It's amazing that it's here, but that is coming up very fast, about three weeks from now, March the 6th through the 10th. Other than that, I think that's all the announcement we have, other than some girls' basketball playoffs coming up. So.
Close that. Yes, sir. Awesome. Thanks for those updates. Any other comments, questions from the board? Okay, I hear none. Now, 8:15, we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.